Okay, we'll call to order the regular city council meeting of August 22, 2022. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Trent.
Here.
Thank you. We please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming, at least a few people out there. I would like to make an announcement tonight before we start the meeting. As we know, we had special meetings last week, and we made an offer to Mr. Dan Swallow to be our city manager. The city was not able to come to an agreement with Mr. Swallow, so Mr. Swallow will not be coming to work for our city. We wish him well and thank him for his interest in our city. Fortunately, we are blessed with some riches in our city, and we have a current city manager, Nick Banda, who is doing an excellent job. I took the liberty to ask Mr. Banda if he would be willing to serve as our, not our interim city manager, as our full city manager, and he has agreed. If, of course, if council approves that, he has agreed to serve. And then he has also agreed to mentor and work with some of our younger employees to help them grow and help them to achieve their career goals, including Anthony and other people, so that's going to be part of his mission, and that's where that situation is. So if we want him, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So with that information, I would like to make a motion to hire Nick Banda as Rochester City Manager for the term of one year.
Support? So a motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Gould, discussion Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, yeah, and I would strongly support. When we recently had some hires in the city, we kind of reconfigured some positions, and currently we do not have an acting assistant city manager, so I would hope that we would look at some of those internal candidates, such as Finance Director Maggio, for that position.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I would hope that we do what we've said, because succession planning is important, and the message we sent last Thursday was anything but that, so I welcome the fact that Nick will be stepping into the city manager role and will be mentoring staff, including Anthony Maggio. I think that undoes a lot of the stress that was put on staff after Thursday's decision.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm kind of torn with this, only because of the fact that that's, these are not, and this has nothing to do with Nick. I think Nick's done an amazing job. I know what he's done in the past 12 years. He started when I first started here, and I more than 100% support him. What I'm having an issue with, though, is the process. So I had selected someone else for that position based out of the candidates that we had interviewed, and I don't think there's been enough time to process this. I know we need to get the city back on track and have a next leadership here, and I'm just wondering why he could not just stay on as the interim city manager for, if it's going to only be for a year. I do appreciate and would like to make sure that we have full succession planning for whoever is going to go into a deputy city manager role, based on how we had originally planned all this, I think, with prior discussions. So I don't know if I'm comfortable voting tonight for him in that position due to the way the process has been, but I would love him if he would have been the city manager for a long time already, so that would have been great. That's what I have to say.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, city manager Banda.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I may, okay.
Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, and this is to you, Nick. This had nothing to do with you 100%. I would have liked a unanimous vote, but because of process and how I had committed my time trying to select a city manager through this process, I do not think it's right for the ones that I had chosen to move in another direction at this moment. Thank you.
Onto public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled presentations. Brian, anybody?
There is no public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next we have, any in the audience? Next we have approval of the minutes, consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of July 25, 2022, and also consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of August 8, 2022.
Motion to approve both as presented.
Support.
By Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage, discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is approval of the consent agenda. First is to approve the purchase of 12 ballistic shields for the police department from the lowest bidder, Ally Brothers Uniform. The purchase price is $53,000 and is within the budget amount to allow for this purchase. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Michigan Ovarian Cancer National Alliance to hold the Turn Your Town Teal Ribbon Event during the month of September. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the Connect the Nations of Oakland University to hold their International Potluck Event on Monday, August 29, in the area of the Banshell. Sounds like an awfully big potluck to me. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Rochester Community Schools Foundation to hold the annual Hometown Hustle 5K on Saturday, September 17. Next is a consideration of a special event application from St. Andrews Parish to hold their annual parish picnic on Sunday, September 18. Next is consideration of a special event application from the PSD event to hold downtown Trick or Treat event on Saturday, October 15. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the PSD to hold the Kris Kringle Market on December 2 and 3 on West Fourth between Main and Walnut. It's almost Christmas. And finally, a review of the current 2022 event calendar. Council.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
I will support with the men to remove item A for discussion.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage, to approve the consent agenda except for item A. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Very good. Councilmember Sage.
I will make a motion to approve item A on the consent agenda with the following discussion. So this is another example, because we've talked about this now for over a year. The scorecard would not indicate that this should be approved, but yet, when reading it, obviously I'm going to approve this. So again, I guess I would encourage us to get to a point where we have a separate scorecard for DPW, the police, and fire outside of the other normal course of business. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. We did discuss that at the last finance committee meeting, and then said, due to kind of the budget cycle, we're not going to meet this summer, so, and I know Finance Director Maggio has definitely brought that up again, that it is a priority of his, so I believe that soon we'll be fixing this.
Very good. So motion by Councilmember Sage. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I ask a specific question about the proposal? Is this the appropriate time?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's kind of like the parking meters for me. There is a city in Michigan that manufactures parking meters, yet we went out of state for that. This company is headquartered in England. There's a company in Troy, Michigan called Bullet Safe that manufactures similar shields. There are companies in Indiana, Texas, Florida, all over the country. Why are we sending money out of the country? Is it that far of superior product? And why is buying local, or at least in the country, not more of a priority for us?
Police chief, Mr. Mayor, he was dealing with the problem downstairs. He'll be here in two seconds, I believe, because he should answer that. I don't know the answer to that question, Councilman, that's a good question.
Okay. We can, I suggest, if we want, we can wait.
If you don't mind.
We'll push this back in the agenda till the police chief.
I'd like him to answer.
Councilmember Sage, is that okay?
That's acceptable, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next, there's no old business or table items, there are no public hearings, there are no legislative deliberations tonight. Onto reports and regular business, is consideration of a city council nomination to the Board of Review.
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So we have two applications, Kyle Houston and Jeffrey Kusemba, and I would like to nominate both of them. I believe they will be filling the alternate positions.
Support.
Madam Clerk, do we need a supporters that come up at the next meeting?
That's correct, Your Honor. Confirmation will be next meeting.
So those two are nominated.
Correct.
Okay. Councilmember Albrecht.
Just to Councilmember Gould, I'm looking at what was in the packet, and the firm selected is Livonia, Michigan, so where did you get London?
That's an importer in Livonia, Michigan, but they're being manufactured, the headquarters is.
Okay, thanks for clarifying. I just, it lost me for a second, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next is a consideration of the council liaison to the Sister City Committee, the RIAA, the Budget Committee, and the DDA. Those are the committees that were opened up by Councilmember Harrison's leaving, and I am going to appoint to all those Sister City, RIAA, the Budget Committee, and the DDA, our new councilperson, Councilperson Trent. So she's going to be appointed to those spots. And then if anybody's interested, and Councilmember Trent cannot serve on City Beautiful as our council liaison, so if anybody is interested in that, they need to let me know before the next meeting.
Chief, sir, if you'd like to.
Okay, chief, there's a, if you could come up, there's a question on the ballistic shields. Councilmember Gould, you want to?
Yeah, good evening, chief. I had a question about the shields. I did some, a little bit of research on the company, United Shield International. I do appreciate that they're being purchased from a company in Livonia, but United Shield International is headquartered in England, and I'm wondering why we're sourcing out our products to foreign companies when there's plenty, there's actually a place in Troy, Michigan, that manufactures such equipment called Bullet Safe. Maybe their products are far and fair, I don't know. I want to make sure we're looking at that, but there are a lot of companies headquartered in the United States, in Indiana, Texas, Florida, that seem to have been overlooked. I would prefer it if our money could stay, if not local, regional, if not regional in the state, and if not in the state, at least in the country.
I appreciate that, and I would not disagree with you. However, our firearms instructors and staff looked at a number of products, and there are a lot of products. You can go on the internet and go to amazon.com, you can go anywhere and find a lot of different products, but we found wide-ranging degrees of quality. It even goes back to the way that their handles are mounted, the options that are available, as well as price. So looking at all of those items, this was the item that was selected as the best combination of all of those issues regard to price, the size, weight, shape, and makeup of the product.
In your consideration, when you evaluate things like this, is location of where the money's going considered?
I think it's considered because it's been asked of us, but I think, I guess I'm more concerned with the price and quality of the product and our comfort level with the company based on our references and things of that nature. So sure, as I said, as I started this, I would certainly prefer that we were able to find something locally, but I'm more concerned with making sure that we get something that we're comfortable with and that our people are comfortable with, the reliability and shape-size comfort of the product.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Sage, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson, is there further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I'd just like to thank Councilmember Gould for always sort of bringing this up, that he tends to be, this is something he's very passionate about, and I want to thank him for always looking out for that.
Thank you, sir.
Next, if the council will indulge myself, we are going to have, there's been a resignation from the Planning Commission, and so there is an opening now, and just so we can try to put this person on, I'm going to nominate Rich Konziak to that position. He put in his application today, I think, yesterday, so we do have two, typically I would appoint, nominate somebody, and then we'd have two weeks to do that. Rich did apply for that vacant city council spot, so people do know him. We do have a Planning Commission meeting before the next council meeting, so it's up to council's pleasure to either seat him tonight or wait for the two weeks to, you know, or not, however. Councilmember Albrecht.
I would support that nomination. I worked with Rich on the Tree Committee when we first established the Tree Committee. He was very passionate about his HOA, and, you know, we had some very interesting discussions early on, which really resulted in, I think, a better end result at the end, so, and I really respected his point of view and how he looked at things, and I know when Nick and I and the Tree Committee interacted with Rich and some of his people there, I was impressed with the thought process and the research he had done in it, so I would make a motion to appoint or support your nomination to the Planning Committee effective immediately, if that's appropriate.
So, so a motion by Councilmember Albrecht, is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, discussion. Councilmember Peterson.
And I appreciate him as well for submitting his application for both positions and with the Planning Commission, but even though it was last minute, it would have been nice to have received that information prior to, to follow process and protocol, but I will support him.
Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Welcome, Rich, and again, thank you for continuing to participate in the process after participating in the previous process. Is that a nice way of saying that? I don't know.
The process and the process.
The process. Next, we have a consideration of the request to complete road, mill, and fill projects. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you. So council, at our earlier, an earlier meeting, we started talking about the bond money. There's Alec. He's looking pretty casual there, I like that. So he.
Hey, we're both wearing polos here.
There you go. We, we were looking, grinding down into the details, no pun intended, that, how can we get this done now? And knowing that you freed up the money through the bond process, we've gone through that, and there's a whole bunch of related things tonight that Alec's going to go over. Because of the contract, how it came in with ASI, we even could do more than we thought we could do, so he'll break these down one at a time and go over the projects, if you will.
Alec, welcome.
Yep. Hey, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So for tonight, we've got a proposal for approval of two new road sections, one being the connector between Alice and Helen Street, and the other being the other half of Roselawn. Currently, one half of Roselawn is being, is being done with the current Helen project, and so we would be proposing to work with DePoneo to have them do the other half at their current unit cost, which would be $31,167.80, and then the other contractor would be Bowen Paving, who just finished up on Letica, and they will be at $36,680. So with those two amounts, plus the $255,400 that was approved for ASI and their mill and fill work, that leaves us at about $3,692 remaining. The work on the, on Roselawn and the Alice Helen Connector is going to be a little bit more than a mill and fill, and that's why those amounts seem to be a little bit larger than the ASI amounts. Those are going to be a little bit more, a little bit more of an actual reconstruction of the road.
Mr. City Attorney, you got it? Mr. City Manager.
Oh, no, I'm good, and this is, the $255 Alec talked about is the linwood, lysandr, all that's all with ASI, so this was that extra file money, trying to wrap these up and not have to go to the general fund to do this, so we're, it worked out great. ASI gave us a great price on the mill and fill on the central west side of town, so we're excited about this, and we support this totally.
Councilmember Sage. Councilmember Albrecht.
Question for Alec. I see that you're going to go down 12 inches on Helen. Was that just because it's in such disrepair, or how was that, or is the, or was it the, I forget the ratings we use, what's that system?
Pazer.
Pazer rating, was that just because the pazer rating was, was different from the other ones we're doing, where we're just doing the two-inch mill and fill? Looks like this one is going down to a depth of 12 inches.
You're saying on the connector between Alice and Helen?
Yes.
Yes, so that was actually, the whole road was torn up when we finished that water main project, so that was the addition that we approved about a month ago for DePoneo to do extra water main work in there, so that's another reason why it's, needs to be more reconstructed, because the actual road was torn up in the process, and I believe, yeah, I don't know what the pazer rating was off the top of my head, but that road was in pretty bad state.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the $3,700 left within the fund for any cost overrun, correct?
Exactly.
And then it would just revert itself?
Yeah, we were likely to leave that as kind of a buffer.
Okay, and then it would revert itself back to the general fund, right? Or would it stay?
To the general fund, right to the streets, the section of general fund, if we didn't spend that money.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yep. Motion to approve.
Councilmember, motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage, discussion. I'd just like to say that the mill and fill on Letica looks great, was done in a, in a day, so if we, hopefully all that happens, I think that's going to be a great boon for our city, so.
It was striped today also.
It was.
Looks good.
Looks great. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of an automatic vehicle location service provider. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, so previously, under the former administration, the decision was made to go after certain company to do the, I'll call it vehicle tracking, and the concept behind that was during snow season, during leaf season, there's a lot of other uses that people use it for, some good and some not so good, that a contract was issued with a certain company that made promises to the administration that they could deliver that product, and it would interface with the residents. Would say we had a disagreement inside on who it should be, but the one that presently can't perform the duties was selected. So Alec's done his homework, we met with Rochester Hills, and Alec, you can fill him in, to approve and system that will work, does the same thing we want, it will interact with the residents so that we can real-time follow the snow plows, the leaf trucks, any vehicle that we have, and he's done a lot of research on this and felt comfortable making this recommendation. It wasn't the budget because we were going to pay for the other company, and we got out of the contract. He did his magic and got out of the other contract so that we can enter into this contract if council so wishes, so Alec.
Alec.
Yeah, so this would be basically a GPS unit in every vehicle, that, you know, vehicles nowadays are really just big computers, so everything has sensors on it, and we were able to hook up to these sensors to monitor material usage, like salt usage, we can do mapping to see, you know, when a snowplow blade is down or up, and, you know, we can track that kind of thing. Another great use for this is just kind of a, to kind of cover your butts. I know a lot of times, you know, there may be accusations of, hey, a city vehicle did this, and we can go into the system and, you know, see where that vehicle was to confirm that. I, one of the things I'd like to do with this is, with Rochester Hills also using the same company, as well as a few other communities in Michigan too, and they've all seemed to really like them, I know lots of residents in town, you know, either live in Rochester and, you know, work in the hills, or vice versa, and I'd like to be able to put our snowplow map all in one, so residents don't have to go in two different places to look, and it could kind of just be a one-stop shop for that. So this one with Skyhawk, which we're proposing to go with, it's a upfront cost of $11,515 and an annual price of about $5,500.
I have a question.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you, thank you, Alec. This is a great initiative. I think residents are going to love it. My question is, what is the interface with the residents? Is it just on the webpage, or is there anything, any push notifications that can be set up, anything like that? What would their experience be?
Nope, it would just be a link on our website, so it'd be, not sure where we'd put it yet, but I don't believe there's a way for anyone to get alerts. That's a good question, though. I can, I can get with the rep after this and see if that's available. In our talks, it hasn't been mentioned, so I don't think it is. So they wouldn't actually see on the map, you know, where each vehicle is, because, you know, we don't want people to be able to track our vehicles, but it'll show, you know, once a plow has been down a road, they may highlight that road yellow to show, okay, it's been down this road within the past half an hour kind of thing, so that's what the resident will see.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I spoke to Alec and copied Nick, because I just didn't remember why we didn't approve them back. I didn't go back into my city council packets to research this, but, you know, when I looked at Alec's write-up, which made sense, we're following the same service provider as Rochester Hills, I don't know if we picked, and I know, Nick, you said this was under prior administration, so, but normally, when we get things from you, from, from administration or DPW, they're making a recommendation, so I guess the recommendation, whenever we approved this, which was early 2022, was to go with this GeoTab, so I just, you know, I don't want to play Monday morning quarterback, but why didn't we go with Skyhawk back then instead of GeoTab? So, you know, I'm glad we're correcting our mistake, and I'm glad that Alex is, is on the job to vet all this, but I don't know why we approved the other one if this was what Rochester Hills was using and using successfully last winter.
We don't either. I'll just leave it at that.
Councilmember Gould? That's a great answer.
Yeah, that was good.
Sorry.
I believe the monthly payments, I think, were a bit cheaper with GeoTab.
Get what you pay for.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So is this going to be perceived by the city employees as a tad invasive, a little big brotherish? Have you ever read or heard anything about that?
With my discussion with employees, I don't think anyone, I think at first, maybe last year or two years ago, whenever the city first started looking at it, I think people had concerns. I don't think those concerns are still there anymore. I mean, anytime, I guess we can call someone and ask them where they are and check up on them. You know, I can tell you this isn't going to be used for disciplinary action, or, you know, watching people all day, you know, I think really is just used for the analytics side of things, and so I don't think those concerns are still there. And, I mean, it'll be, it'll be in my vehicle, it'll be, you know, in all of them.
If I may, I might shed some light, so initially, so initially that was a concern[1778.23] So initially, so initially, that was a concern and a reason why it was picked, to be honest with you. There was some struggle with the acting DPW director and relationship over there, and it came out that that's why you're doing this. So we did have a problem. The union, the folks all got together. So then we sat them down and said, yes, it could be used for that, but Alec's right, we can find any of you on your phones. That's not the point here. If you want to look at it that way, you can, but we're also trying to do a service for the residents. Rochester Hills has it, many communities have it. So once we got over that hump, they're still skeptical, but I think we are well past that now with the staff, that it's a tool that's commonly used. We can find you if we need to find you, and we're not trying to do that. So certainly Alec's aware of that sensitivity, and so am I in the situation, but we felt that the good of the program for the community overrode that concern, which we did address. We didn't avoid it. We told them, yes, I can do that, but that's not the point of it. So it didn't start out that way, because some were put on without letting them know, and then that was a problem. So we got that straightened out.
Councilmember Gould?
And from other communities I've talked to, it sounds like they had, when they first started, you know, people had concerns similar to that, but I think after a while, and after seeing it being used to actually kind of help employees, when, you know, there might be an accusation about a truck going 40 miles down my road, and we can go back and look, and no, it was only going 15 miles down your road. So I think it's really a shield for the employees, too.
Councilmember Gould?
Thank you. I just, that was the first thing that struck me, and given some recent events, I am eager to make sure the city employees are happy. My second question, then, it appears that we're sharing, we'll be able to share data with nearby communities, such as Rochester Hills, and then we can analyze some of those data to see if we are operating as efficiently as them, economically as them, et cetera. Is that what we intend on doing with the software? With those data?
No, I think we ultimately are trying to compare it to ourselves in regards to, you know, salt usage or any other, seeing where vehicles have gone to make sure that we're not, you know, going over the same roads twice, or being efficient with our routes. It's really about comparing it to ourselves to make our operations more efficient.
Certainly, the tool is there through the mayor. Mr. Gould, that tool is there. But again, I agree, we're trying to self-perform and see that, make sure that we think we're doing a really good job now and being efficient, but now we'd be able to analytically prove that we are. And then that's a good benchmark against other communities, because they'll say they have X amount of hours per mile, things like that. But so I think we can use it, the tool is there if we need it that way.
Thank you.
It's like self-scouting, but at the same time, it doesn't hurt to scout the other team as well. Councilmember Trent?
Yes. Is this like a written agreement or just a verbal agreement that you won't be using this for disciplinary action? I mean, is this something that would be looked at further down the road that maybe, I mean, you know, things change as we see?
Mr. City Attorney, would you like to comment?
Well, I suppose that if, when the, I guess, reviewed from a labor perspective, if someone thought it was a bargaining, an item for bargaining, I suppose they could mention that, or they could bring that up, and they would have to be looked at through our Labor Council to see if there's a contractual issue with that. I obviously haven't reviewed the contract on that, but I would certainly, if there's a concern, it would be raised in that context, a collective bargaining context, and there's a process to go through to see, see if that is really a concern.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, so I would equate this to the cameras at the yard. We didn't put them up there to see who ran into what, but we're going to use them if we can find out and get the truth. So if those tools were not meaning to track your car, but if somebody, Alec, I like what he said, it's a shield for the residents. We have residents calling saying, truck number 42 went 40 miles an hour down my road. We can now prove them wrong, but that does cut both ways. If you are going 40 miles an hour, we're going to use that as a learning moment with that employee, and say, here's the data. And so I wouldn't say we wouldn't, but that's not our purpose of it, but we're going to use any tool we can to make ourselves better.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So Alec, when you spoke with Rochester Hills, because I've seen their program and functioning, did they ever discuss anything that it was ever a concern like that for their employees?
No, I think everyone I've spoken to didn't have any of those concerns.
And the other question is, you mentioned that it would be not exactly real time, because you're not going to, the residents only going to see on the map that the road's been done. You're not going to be seeing them every moment plowing, correct? Okay.
Correct. Yeah, that's really for the safety of our employees.
Right, right. No. And I appreciate that as well, because I know it's a tough job to go out and do that as well. So, thank you.
Councilmember Sage? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple follow-up questions on that, probably to the city attorney. Do we want to get ahead of this and put something in the employee handbook, the code of conduct, to where it codifies some of these understandings before we get to a labor negotiation?
That's actually, it's a good question, and why don't we put it on ourselves to talk with labor attorney to see the best way to get that worked out before, we need to work it out. I think that's where you're getting to.
And second question. Do we have a data sharing agreement with these other municipalities? Because there's always this question about telematics solutions. Who owns the data?
Right.
Right? So I'd want to protect us if we're sharing anything with another municipality.
Yeah, with privacy policies. Good. Terms of privacy.
But this one is not, I'm sorry, Mayor, but this one is not linked at all to anyone else. It would be us independently giving that information, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, I mean, it's just like those privacy policies in terms of agreement on all our websites as to how are you, what are you doing with this data before it comes up?
And this could be also like with the police body cam information, right? I mean, same kind of issue, I would imagine.
We'll be ahead of it.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
I support.
Support by Mayor Protem Salvia. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
So would we expect an update on those questions? Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, when you get a chance?
Yes, I'm sorry, I did head nod, so I should have, ought to believe responded. Thank you.
All right. Next is consideration of a cross-connection control professional service agreement with HydroCorp. Mr. City Manager?
Yep, again, I'm going to have Alec jump in, and I know Jason's here, too. So we've had a program, and it's served us well, quite frankly, because water's very scary, as we just found out. And we take an abundance of care with this. And I appreciate, Rich, I know you've been part of this too, that we work with the associations on a potential cross-contamination through irrigation system, cross-meters, cross-connections. We have a robust program. It started off a little slow, again, people saying, you're coming to my house to check what, or the businesses saying the same thing. For about two years, it was difficult to get into everywhere, but it's been smooth sailing for years now. This company has performed for, I believe it was eight years now, and I know that, Alec, you guys went out to look, and I know we have our policy about every five years to bid it out again. And I think this is, we have the right to make two more years of extensions according to the last time we went out. So we followed that, and it just, we made our agreement, then said, we have two more one-year options if we like, and we have total confidence in this company to do what they've done, and they know our community, and they're trusted by the businesses and the residents. So it used to be, it wasn't your irrigation system. Now they worry about that even, because that's potential cross-connection. Doesn't matter if you're commercial or residential. So we recommend that we would enter into this agreement for one year, right, Alec? Extension on this one?
Correct, yes. So the initial contract was from 2019. It was a three-year contract with the ability to do two one-year extensions. So this would be the first one-year extension for a total of $13,002 for a year. And I will say, HydroCorp is kind of, they're really kind of the only player in this game. They work, they do work for loads of municipalities in the state, and this would be just for commercial cross-connection control, which is a requirement by Eagle. But Eagle regulations are moving more towards residential as well, like Nick was saying, with irrigation and other, you know, water connections around the house. So that may be something in the future we'd have to look at, be teaming up with HydroCorp to do residential as well. But this would be just for continuing commercial.
Motion to approve the one-year extension with HydroCorp as presented.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is consideration of a winter road maintenance contract agreement with the Oakland County Road Commission. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Again, sorry, Alex, talk over here, but again, MDOT and the Oakland County Road Commission works with us, they authorize us to take care of their roads, and then they pay us an amount for that, and every year, they send us how much they're willing to pay for us, and we analyze that, quite frankly, and make sure that we're not being underpaid for what we do. So we track that. It's going to help actually even quantify it more with the tracking system. We can quantify, this is exactly how many hours we spend on your road. If we think it's a problem, it has not been, they've been fair, they understand inflation, et cetera, so we would recommend that we enter into this contract, again, to allow us to take care of the roads, and we like that we have control over it. We don't have to wait for somebody else to come and do our work for us, especially on these important roads.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious how, I mean, I know they use the inflation and that for the increase this year, but they had received so much in federal dollars, I don't know why they just didn't pass along that 3% increase.
I know why.
Yeah.
Further, counsel?
No, I'll make a motion.
Motion by the Mayor Protem?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Peterson. Discussion?
I have a quick discussion item, since we're talking about snow plowing, and it's August. I'm just wondering, how's our salt supplied? Are we looking at salt? Do we need to buy salt ahead of time? Just wondering.
Alec?
I believe we just put an order in for some more salt. I don't know if Jason's still in the room, if he has.
Jason wants you to come on up?
As Jason's walking up, it's funny that you asked that, because this morning I got an email from the state saying, hey, I know this is a little late, but we found some money that we can help you rebuild your salt barns if you didn't do it yet. I'm like, we could redo it, but we just did it. So we were trying to be kind, but literally, that came this morning.
Yeah, so several years ago, we went into that big conglomerate with other communities, and we're still under that. Next year's when that expires. So, but like our fiscal year here, the cost just went up, the barn just got fixed. So the barn is three-quarters of the way full. I plan on filling it here in the next couple weeks, and then we'll start our order, and then we'll go back as part of that big conglomerate out again. I talked to Kelly Monaco from Farmington Hills today, actually, just to double-check, and they're putting together that plan, so we'll stay a part of that program.
Thank you.
So we're ready to go.
Didn't we use a lot less salt last year?
Yeah, and that's part of the brine solution. When you put down the pre-treatment of the roads, you use less salt that way, because it sticks out on the roads better. So that's why we do all our majors and primary, secondaries, and school routes with the brine first, and then it makes the road stay safer longer, so you don't have to come in, be in longer, putting more salt down. And then with the rivers and the streams, you try to use less salt. So it's better for all of them.
Wasn't there some climate change issues?
Yeah.
Does it sell, what's the customer, Gould?
Do you think the county will allow us to put some Skyhawk units in their plows?
There you go.
I think they have a different variation of that already, but they might not talk to each other.
Can all be in the cloud together.
When we're passing each other and giving thumbs up, that's the communication.
Thank you.
Working well.
We voted on that, correct?
No, we need to.
No, we didn't.
I'm sorry, distracted everything.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we accept the liquor license application to transfer the liquor license from Fountain Enterprise LLC to Oak Creek Taverna LLC. So also set up a public hearing this issue for the September 12, 2022 meeting. Think the applicant's here? Do you want to say something or not?
Tom Lockley with the applicant.
You don't have to, you're here.
Tom Lockley on behalf of the applicant, the attorney working with them. We're just here to answer any questions, so that's pretty much it. Thanks.
Any questions for council? Okay. Mayor Protem Salvia, you have a question?
Thank you. It's really, I just really want to comment, and thank you for bringing this business and improving that location. I read through, you're going to put $600,000 in there. That's a lot of money. It's a great location. It's been empty too long, so very excited to see you coming there, and can't wait to come and enjoy some good food there, some Greek food.
Sounds good. So, Madam Clerk, do we need two separate motions here?
No, Your Honor. Usually, you accept it and set the public hearing at the same time. Motion to move to a public hearing on September 12.
And to accept the application.
Yep.
Motion by?
Support.
Member Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role?
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, and good luck. That, welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we're on to receipt of the check register report. Mr. City Manager, any comments?
No, sir, we have them for 8/4, 8/11, and 8/18. Any questions, we'd be glad to answer. Marcy will be glad to answer any questions. Want to see if she's still awake back there? She is.
She is. All right, on to receive a report from the Viewers' Boards and Commissions. First is a report from RAR, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. We met on August 10. The thing that really jumped out at the meeting was our, as we were just talking about the check register, our list of bills came in at $365,678. Normally, it's somewhere in the $70,000 to $90,000 range, so that's why it's highlighted in the report. That's if you drive down Second Avenue and you see the parking lot filled with roofing materials, that's what we paid for. So, that's $266,000 worth of roofing materials. We've gotten the remainder of the materials have come in, so they're going to start working on the roof in August, September timeframe. So, we talked about that. As I report all the time, taking end-of-month July registrations versus end-of-month July 2022 registrations versus end-of-month July 2019, using a pre-COVID and a post-COVID as sort of my comparisons. We had 6,267 registrations versus 5,957. So, again, our trend is our friend. We're up 310 year-to-date. Again, please understand that our dance program is still well below where it was back in the day, so that continues to go well. Then, just a couple of call-outs. SCAMP fundraiser, they're doing a cornhole fundraiser tournament on Friday, September 23. And then, the highly successful Holiday Craft and Vendor Show is November 12. I passed out to the city council today, and most of you probably got this at home, as did the residents of Rochester and neighboring communities, which is, instead of sending out catalogs and, you know, killing trees, you can scan the barcode on the back to the programs. And we also always have on that back an ability for you to comment and respond to some survey questions, and then we give out some awards based on people who have responded. So, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Question for Councilmember Albrecht. Don't we typically approve the RAR budget in August?
Yeah, they're supposed to be coming.
I know we approved it. I'll work with Nick to get it on the agenda.
I mean, I know OPC was in here.
Yeah, and it's usually then.
So, just a question.
Okay.
Didn't Teresa tell you she was going to be doing it in front of Rochester Hills, and then they're going to come here?
Well, and that's what we had asked about, but Rochester Hills, I think, I think they already, they might have already done it, or maybe they're doing it tonight also?
Mr. Word?
Okay.
Yeah, that's just.
Okay, thanks.
Been here a long time, and they usually come together. So, I didn't, all of a sudden, like, August is over. Actually, we have a report from the City Beautiful Committee. So, Councilmember Trent, your final report?
Okay, first and final. Yes, we met on August 10. We have continuing the hybrid option, men in person and through Zoom. So, this is what we talked about. The municipal park mural, the beautiful one on the DPW building, we are looking at a protective coating. And the, I think Colin Pettit is going to do a test to make sure that it doesn't change the color of the paint very much. The butterfly wings that had been a little bit damaged have been reinstalled through the west parking structure wall for the people who want their photo taken with butterfly wings and to post it on social media and tag the City of Rochester and Rochester Pollinators. Hey, and also, do you have a wonderful neighbor that you have in your neighborhood that you'd like to nominate for the Good Neighbor Award? Well, here's your chance. You get to do it four times a year. Please, I know there's wonderful neighbors. Sometimes, we don't get as many nominations as we'd like. I think I'd like to get up here and beg a little. But, so, where, how do you do this? You go to the City Beautiful Commission page, and you download that application. And then you can nominate your good neighbor and give them the credit for the credit that they deserve. The Abiding Presence Church participates in a National Community Service Day on Saturday, September 11. And they contacted the CBC, and they asked Rochester Pollinators of the CBC, and they asked if there's anything they could do for the City of Rochester for two hours. And there is. They can meet me at the Main Street Bridge, at the Kayak Locker, at the Pollinator Prairie Rimnant Garden that needs invasive species taken out. So, we're going to identify those species ahead of time, meeting with Clinton River Watershed Council employees that can identify accurately the invasive species. Last, well, there's a couple of more things. Reviving, so, we also got a, someone contacted us from Dinosaur Hill that there was a pollinator garden put in 23 years ago, and they have a scrapbook on that, and it was really very interesting. And they said if anyone from CBC or the Rochester Pollinators volunteers could help clean those gardens up, that they would maintain them. Operative word, maintain, because that's what we need and we look for on the CBC. Beautify and help us keep the city beautiful. So, we also started brainstorming ideas for the CBC for 2023 for our upcoming goals and objectives. So, if any questions, that was pretty much it.
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have a report from the Paint Creek Trailway Commission. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the big upcoming event for the Paint Creek Trail is the Labor Day Bridge Walk and Run on, obviously, Labor Day, Monday, September 5. The event starts at 8:00 AM with registration at the Kiwanis Pavilion. It'll involve a one-mile walk and a 5K run. There's also some kids craft opportunities. There'll be giveaways, some treats, etc. One question I did have for the chief, because it came up, the Friends of the Paint Creek Trail would like to use a drone to capture the event. Do they need some kind of, is there a process? We're good? Okay, I'll let them know. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we're going to add a report that was not on the agenda. We're going to add a infrastructure committee report, because they met, and there's some major things going on. So, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Thank you. Yes, so the infrastructure committee met in person on August 18. So, I think in a normal cycle, it just would have been in our packet. So, I'll just go through the highlights. We discussed MDOT Main Street Reconstruction, so this is the major project that'll be coming in our community in 2023. Actually, the work will be in 2024. So, the discussion at the infrastructure committee was regarding the Main Street Water Main replacement, and really significant for us, a major water project that council is going to need to deliberate on and discuss. Administration is working on funding sources. Of course, we're hopeful for grants, but it will likely need to be bonded for, as well as using funds that we currently have in our water fund, a combination of those. We also discussed the Main Street and Romeo intersection realignment. You know, I call it the Dairy Queen realignment, Dairy Queen intersection realignment. So, they are looking to modify that. And so, I think council will be interested to see the proposal coming back from administration on that. And then, within there, we're, of course, asking Rough Tell Us to rerun the water rate study. So, they're our partner that we have done our water rates with all of these moving pieces on a major project. They're going to review their rates as well. So, lots coming. This will be coming to council within the month.
Very good. Can't wait for that report, right? That's called reality, I guess. Next, on to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Council, I told you, I like seeing positive stuff. So, we, not only the managers' reports, you all get it in the department heads, but whenever there's things that happen significantly in the community, by getting in your packet on the website, people get to see it. How much do you love that picture? Our gentleman, our color guy got asked to come to Tiger Stadium and do that in front of a large crowd that day. They did us proud. And they're, yeah, that's cool. And then they got to actually go casual and got to stay and watch the game. That was their little bonus. And we appreciate the management of the Tigers to allow them to do that. And second, just, it's one guy, but it makes a difference. So, Dave Custer volunteered his time, and he's our liaison, I'm sorry, parking guy in the police department, and does many other things. And Dave put himself out there at Kroger, spent a day, I believe, helping raise dollars and bringing food. And he probably didn't even know we knew he was there, but a little birdie called the chief, and some of the staff, LT, recognized him. So, I'd like to publicly thank him for what he did. And I think that's what makes our community fabric so great. So, we have little things like that. We talked about the fridge. That's getting all kinds of accolades. It's amazing. Said this every time I'd like to say it. Watching people come in and stock it during the day, people now not so cognizant of who's seeing me take food out. It's a need. You don't go there for fun. You go there because you need it. And it's been wonderful. We had to get a bigger fridge, I think, and a better one, better fridge. So, we appreciate that. So, all good news. We thought we'd just share it with you.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Trent?
Yeah, so, could you explain the fridge a little bit to those who may not?
Want me to chief for you? This is his baby. He loves this as much as I do. I love saying to people every day, I go out there, if I see him, hey, thanks for bringing the bag, and it's amazing.
It's important.
Well, the chief's coming up on Facebook today. People look out for the fridge. They said, hey, it's getting low. Can people bring some things?
There you go. How cool is that?
And people were responding. So, I mean, the community is helping the community.
So, the fridge is, it's a food sharing program, essentially. And we have a refrigerator, and then we also have a storage place for canned goods and non-perishables next to it. We occasionally stock it, and we, as Councilmember Albrecht pointed out, we have various community members that do that. One of the things that Nick Banda is mentioning is, we had a young lady who had a lemonade sale. In order to raise money, she raised over $400. And she's periodically been restocking the fridge. So, we kind of have a slogan as, to take what you need and leave what you can. And so, we have people that do both, and we try to keep a stock the best we can. We've got a couple of the fridge people that help us to, you know, watch for spoiled items and things like that. So, it kind of manages itself, and it's been very successful. And like I said, a lot of great comments and a lot of great use. And we're kind of proud to coordinate it, but not without the help from a lot of people in the community.
And I can tell, I met with the food pantry folks, Neighborhood House, last week, and they're in total support. Because originally, I remember chief reached out and said, I'm not trying to take away anything you do. And they're like, no. And they love the partnership. So, they, they're very complimentary.
They are still coming on Saturdays and dropping off some leftovers that they have in their system. And I think one of the benefits of this program is, is a lot of people kind of, and not to no fault of other programs, but there's no questions asked. So, if you're in need and you need something right away, you can come to the fridge and get what you need. So, some of the other programs, people, I think they're embarrassed, they're ashamed, they, you know, maybe worry whether they qualify, or they're going to have to go through a lot of rigmarole and paperwork. So, it kind of is something that fits the need, kind of in between those two types of food sharing programs. So, as I said, it's used on a daily basis.
Well, thank you. I think it's a wonderful opportunity and for showing how much, as I said, this community does care. So, anybody can put food in there? Anybody in the community?
Absolutely.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Open 24 hours a day, and frankly, we have people that are both dropping off and picking up at all hours of the day and night, so.
I did see some kind of, this guy pulls up in a red Mercedes, kind of parked far away, walked up there. And I didn't say where. I just happened to be coming out of City Hall, and kind of looked at me. He's like, I'm just checking to see what it needs. My bag's in the car. I'm like, I didn't say anything. And then he brought stuff too. I thought it was kind of cute. He laughed.
Oh, nice. Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
I laughed.
Okay, and then, Chief, we have this proclamation. Did you want, I'm sorry, Mr. City Manager?
I would, yes. So, I'm going to give total credit here to Megan Frazo. So, last Friday, Wednesday, Thursday, mayor, whenever we talked, Megan said, hey, I know everybody on staff has been very appreciative at public meetings, when all you see, when you see the staff, anybody thanking everybody for the team effort that was put together for the water crisis. And Megan said, you know, it'd be cool, like a proclamation or something. I said, write it up. So, she wrote it up, took her own, on her own accord, did the whereas and everything, ran it by the mayor. And we wanted to make sure we didn't forget anybody. I mean, we were going to name names, but it's the unilaterally mentioned folks in that proclamation, DBW Fire Police, the CERT team, anybody that was helping, whether it was somebody on the west side saying, you can come over to my house, Lynn Vitrano, and fill up water for my sink so that you could get, so you could flush your toilet. People were doing that. So, it was really, just recognize everybody for those efforts. And that was really cool teamwork from everybody, both sides. The gym saying you could come take a shower there if you wanted to. It was, there's a lot of different layers of what to make this happen. We were very excited Friday morning to be able to say, or Saturday morning to say, the water ban was lifted. And knocking wood, that pipe gets here tomorrow, I think. Then they're going to look at starting the process.
So, I'll just read this very, it's a brief one.
Thank you.
And then we can vote on it, if there's a motion for it. So, recognizing staff during the boil water advisory, whereas on Saturday, August 13, 2022, a boil water advisory was issued as a result of a water main break that occurred on the Great Lakes Water Authority Transmission Main, where staff immediately began working together to find creative solutions for those residents impacted by the boil water advisory and those experienced low water pressure, and where staff communicated through the emergency alert system signage, which I thought was great, and the city website to provide awareness, and whereas, under the boil water advisory, staffed worked to distribute thousands of cases of water, answered numerous phone calls, and provided water stations for non-potable water. And whereas, we recognize the Department of Public Works, police, and fire, along with our city hall staff and our CERT team members for their service and compassion. Now, therefore, be resolved, the City of Rochester is grateful for staff's effort to care for the safety and health of its residents, continuing to make Rochester a great place to live.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Trent. Anybody have anything to add? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And pass that on to the staff. Anything else?
I just have one thing. Tomorrow, I think, Mayor, you're joining, or no, tomorrow you're not joining us, right? Mark, I think your Councilman Albrecht's joining us. It's, we talked about, Kristi came and talked about this next generation level. Us, Ferndale, and Royal Oak, and Farmington were picked to be national examples of Main Street programs. So, tomorrow's the groundwork. So, there's staffs coming in from Washington, I believe, and Oakland County. We're going to take a walk with them. We meet at 8:15. We're going to do our presentation. Then we're going to walk them through town. They just don't want to see DDA. They want to see the linkages to the municipal park, all the way through the park and up and around. Then we'll end up and take them to the Mills for lunch. So, it's like a four-hour walking tour with them. So, I think it'll be good for them, good for us to brag a little bit. And then that's going to help them set the way for the program as it comes out in the next few months. That's all I have.
Yes, I would love to be there, but I will be at Waterford Motte tomorrow. See my hands. Madam Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Just, thank you very much. Nick, I think we are left with the best possible choice for a city manager in the end. Just as a side comment, this is probably for Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. I was surprised, I think, during part of the water crisis to hear that we, it wouldn't, maybe, I don't, maybe it's not out of the question to connect the two sides of the city on the same water source. Are we going to explore that at some point? It's open-ended question. It seems that it's probably worth doing.
Back to Nick, maybe?
Yeah, I can. So, in the past, we have done that. And again, with five wells, it stresses out our, for the goal west to east, it's almost impossible without more wells and cross-contamination. You could get through the cross-contamination. We've admitted that. It's the pressure with these five wells. They just wouldn't be able to pump for the whole sea because of the elevation on the east side. We're all relatively low here. So, it works. So, yeah, it would have been really nice to just flip that switch. And we could have got through the testing of the water. We're pretty positive. It's just Corey is educated on the pressure necessary. It's just the walls aren't set up for that kind of torque on them, even running all five at once. They did all kinds of modeling. So, we didn't take that lightly, because that would have been a nice thing to be able to do quickly and avoid what happens.
I figured I wasn't the first one.
Well, it's okay. That's a good, great question.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Salvia?
Just our neighborhood, Stony Point, had their community block party last night. It was great to see the fire department there. And I heard so many positive comments from residents about how well the city handled the water issue. Everyone was so thankful, so happy, truly. A tough problem was handled so well. So, everyone was happy. And I was recruiting for various boards and commissions. So, that is all.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
I just want to thank everybody again, even though we did the proclamation, which I think, I thank Megan for. I am very thankful for the staff that we have here at the city and for what they did to take care of the residents in that time of crisis.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Two things. I'd like to thank Nick Banda for stepping up to the plate. I did at one time think, huh, wouldn't that be nice if Nick would stay on for city manager? It would make things very easy. I like easy. And secondly, the first thing that I did with city council was the call I got on the Saturday that the main had broken. And I was so impressed. I've always been impressed with the staff of the city for many years. And I mean, they were on it. They were professional. They had questions. Everybody, boom, boom, boom. They had everything lined up. And I just was very grateful for that as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing tonight.
Councilmember Sage?
Actually, two things tonight.
All right.
First being, I do want to recognize Nick. Anything you need, let us know. And we appreciate you stepping in to take over right now. We truly appreciate that. And second was the Labor Day Bridge Walk event that the Paint Creek Trail is sponsoring, hosting here. So, I thought Kristi was going to be here tonight, but I would welcome anyone with the DDA or any local merchant. There are still sponsorship opportunities for this event, which is a great way to get your business exposed to. They typically get 200 or more folks here to participate in this event. And this is the one event each year that originates in Rochester. The second one is one that originates in Lake Orion. So, it's a good opportunity. Hope to see everybody out there. Thanks.
Very good.
All right.
I just have a couple of quick things. One, you know, I agree the water situation, the city, I think, handled it very, very well. I'm also very proud of our residents. We talked about the irrigation, and we talked as a staff about, you know, having an emergency decree and forcing people to do it and making a big thing about it. And we all agreed that let's just put it out there. People will cooperate. And we had absolutely no issues. The HOAs all were very supportive and did that. So, again, everybody, residents included, really participated. So, it was really nice to see. And then also, I want to thank Nick Banda for stepping up. And Nick Banda and I talked today, and obviously, it was an interesting weekend and things. And both Nick and I talked to a lot of people. And it was very, I think, heartwarming that while people had differences of opinion, everybody, I believe, had the best interests of the city at heart. And, you know, we can only work successfully together. And I believe that with Nick here and moving forward with the council and staff, that we will do that. So, thank you, everybody, and meeting adjourned. heartwarming that while people had differences of opinion, everybody, I believe, had the best interests of the city at heart. And, you know, we can only work successfully together. And I believe that with Nick here and moving forward with the council and staff that we will do that. So thank you, everybody. And meeting adjourned.